Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County Forum for candidates for Mill Creek City Council Positions Three and Four. I'm Vicky Roberts-Gassler, a member of the League. I will be asking some of the questions and my colleague Sue Renhart will also be asking questions. Thank you for joining us. Let me provide some background on the position. The city council is the legislative body of city government that establishes city policy and provides a framework for city administration to respond to community needs. Council members manage basic public services, sewer, water, fire, police, roads, parks, et cetera. They establish and enforce local laws affecting individuals and businesses, including local taxes, control how land can be used, and provide direction to the mayor. Candidates do not declare a political party preference. Candidates for Mill Creek City Council Position Three are Connie Allison and Scott Harder. Candidates for Mill Creek City Council Position Four are Tanis Goldieski and Gorav Kumar. It is the policy of the League to be nonpartisan. Therefore, we neither endorse nor oppose candidates or parties. The rules for participation in this forum were sent ahead of time to all the candidates and they have agreed to follow them. I will pose the questions and will clearly state the amount of time allowed for each answer. We're using a countdown timer which is visible to all candidates and time limits on answers will be strictly enforced. The order for responses to the first question will be Mr. Kumar, Ms. Goldieski, Mr. Harder, and Ms. Allison. I will then alternate candidates in the starting position to ensure a fair sequence but keeping the two positions together. You'll see how this works. Let's begin. Candidates will have 90 seconds to respond to this first question. Mr. Kumar, the question is, what are your top priorities for this office? Please explain why you are focusing on these priorities.
Thank you, Vicky, and to everybody who's listening now and in the future. My name is Gorav Kumar. I am focused on safety, law and order, economic development, and fiscal responsibility as my four top priorities. And the reason I'm focused on each one of them, I'll start from the last one, the fiscal responsibility, is that the city of Mill Creek has a current deficit of about $450,000 in 2025 and a projected deficit of plus 1.5 million in 2026. So at the end of the current biennium, we will be about $2 million deficit in the general fund. And as a city, it's not a bad thing to be in deficit, but not having a plan to jump out of it, that's what I think most important. And a plan that doesn't involve increasing taxes or reducing services. So it is very important that the city manages its budget and be fiscally responsible in the way we spend our money and the way we make our money. So that's why I'm in the race. That's the fiscal responsibility part of why I am here. The additional that sort of tie into it is the economic development piece where I have a three-pronged economic development plan so that we can turn the business, we can turn around and attract more businesses into the city. And that's why those are my priorities.
Thank you. Ms. Goldieski?
Good evening. So my top priorities come from a sort of the lens that I approach all of this from is, we moved here 22 years ago. We chose to come here because of some of the same things I think a lot of people love about Mill Creek. Green spaces and that small-town feel that says that you're part of a community. So across all of the priorities that I have, it really comes down to building community by having some shared community spaces available and making sure that residents feel engaged. So in specific projects that are in front of the community right now and in front of city council in the next five to 10 years, I see, I really want to see a community center built on the DRCC property with spaces for residents of all different needs to gather. I want to see the development in the South Town Center include community gathering spaces, someplace for the festival to still happen, enhancing and maintaining the access to the North Creek Trail as part of our green space down there, enhancing the existing stormwater pond as a potential park and a space for people to gather. And then I'd like to see the Library Park Playground renovation and Library Park Veterans Memorial or Veterans Monument renovation come together as a space, that's again a space where we gather, where we host successful programs twice a year. So I think it's really important to see that project through. And then finally, I'd like to see the city take ownership for the Penny Creek Natural Area. It's a gem, it's a beautiful space, and it's a good opportunity for all of us in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Harder?
Thank you. My top priorities for the city is responsible growth, public safety, housing, fiscal responsibility, and community engagement. I feel Mill Creek is at a crossroads and we need to plan strategically for upcoming projects while preserving the character of what makes the city so great. Public safety is also key and I definitely support proactive policing, policing, and traffic improvements that keep everybody safe. Housing is another priority, especially for local workers, teachers, first responders, and single parents, all who should be able to live here in the city. And on the financial side, I like to ensure city resources are used efficiently, explore grants, and support local businesses to grow revenue responsibly. And then finally, I believe in transparency and community engagement. I want residents' voices at the center of decisions and leveraging volunteers and keeping communication open just so Mill Creek remains connected, safe, and thriving.
Thank you. Ms. Allison?
Thank you. Yes, my priorities for the city remain as they were when I took office four years ago. Above all else, we need to have a safe community, so public safety is number one. That's not just about having a healthy police department, which we do have, much healthier than we were four years ago. We're nearly fully staffed. But also that it's a welcoming and safe place for everybody to walk, bike, you know, use the mass transit that comes through our city. And that we preserve that community feel and, you know, that does mean we stop speeders and we ticket them, keeping the community safe. The next priority is making sure that Mill Creek remains livable and the charming space that my family decided to call home 15 years ago. I really, you know, I want to preserve the single-family neighborhoods. That means being responsible about the planning. We have to grow. Every community has to grow. But the policies that the council decides to enact decide where those apartments will go and I prioritize the single-family residents' communities above apartments. And then plan for long-term, our infrastructure. I'm really concerned about our aging infrastructure.
Thank you. For the next question, candidates will again have 90 seconds. Candidate Allison, you lead off on this one. What qualifications and experience make you a good choice to address these priorities?
Thank you. Yeah, I've been at Boeing for more than 32 years. I've held multiple positions at Boeing. I did leave for a couple of years. I had a small business when my two oldest children were young. So I have that background too. I know what businesses need and value that that form of community involvement. Our businesses are so important to our community. I've held leadership positions. I've held strategic leadership positions both in program management and in engineering at Boeing, as well as technical positions in engineering as well. And that gives me a a good background to make policy for the city, understanding that one narrow-minded decision can have far-reaching consequences. So it's very important that you look beyond what the immediate decision is to make, but how will that play out over decades? And ensuring that we keep this community charming and livable through those policies that we make. I also have raised five children. My youngest is a sophomore in high school. So the youth, the youth having things to do here is very important to me also.
Thank you. Mr. Harder?
Thank you. I've, like many, have lived in the city for a long time. I moved here 19 years ago and I've raised my family. My kids have been in the school system here in the city and utilize the services of the city as well. This, I feel this brings on hands-on experience. Inside, I also bring that hands-on experience from working inside, you know, the government here at the city. I worked for three years in communications, marketing, and recreation for the city. I also worked as a public information officer at South County Fire. And previous to that, I worked for 13 years in communications and outreach at Puget Sound Energy and Representatives Snohomish County. During my time with the city, I spent a lot of time attending city council meetings, getting to know many of the current city council members, presented information and supported council initiatives. And I feel like I understand how a lot of those decisions are made and what it takes to turn those ideas into action between county, between city council and city staff. There's a lot, a lot that goes on between what a council needs and how the city can support that. So it's just taught me how to engage residents effectively and ensure transparency and uniquely positions me to, you know, tackle this responsible growth, the public safety, housing, fiscal responsibility, along with the community engagement in keeping residents' voices at the center of every decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Goldieski?
Hi. I think the biggest thing that I have as an experience is I've been the chair of the Parks Board for the last four years, a couple of years as a member before that. I've attended every council meeting for the past couple of years, two and a half years about. So I really understand what's happening at the council level, not just the general idea of what it means to be a city council member, but, you know, what are the issues that are coming forward today and in next month and the next month. And I've spent the last 22 years as a resident of Mill Creek, mom of five kids, been involved in a ton of different activities and different community organizations. I feel like I have a really good idea of what residents are looking for. Again, as a mom of a bunch of kids and a volunteer in several leadership-type organizations, I understand how to take different people's viewpoints and try to find the best solution that will work for everybody. I try to work as collaboratively as possible, consider myself a pretty good listener. I love to learn new things. I don't, I know that I don't know everything. I understand clearly what I don't know and I'm willing to learn new things to do the job correctly. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Kumar?
Thank you for that question, Vicky. Great question. So remember, my topmost priority, and that's what the city needs right now, is an economic development plan. That is the need of the hour with all these businesses leaving Mill Creek. QFC, Brooklyn Brothers Pizza, Boston's, Safe, Starbucks, they all are either on their way out or have already left. There is an urgent need for the city to turn things around economically. And that is my biggest, sort of my reason why I'm in the race. And what I bring to the experience that I'm drawing from, see, I have over two decades of a successful career in business leadership and business growth and in enabling growth and servicing growth and attracting growth. In deploying people, programs, processes, and tools, so we can go out and attract new businesses into the city and then once the growth is enabled, we have to go service the growth. So I've done this for over two decades on the private world and that's the experience I'm building in. So I have the business background, the acumen, and the consensus building needed, especially in the city council, so we can work with the city staff and deploy an economic development plan and put the city back on the path to providing, to continue providing an outstanding service in a fiscally responsible way. Thank you.
Thank you. Timer, please note that candidates will have 60 seconds for the next questions. Please adjust the clock. Beginning with candidate Goldieski, given competing and conflicting priorities, what factors will guide your finance and budgeting decisions?
So I can think of two really important factors to consider when we're looking at any decision. One is that the city has put together, the current council in their last retreat planning session, has put together priorities for the city. And I think that even though we have a new council coming in in January, it's important to recognize that they did a really good job putting those priorities together. So the city, they want to see the city's vision is to be clean, safe, and well-maintained with an engaged community and financial viability. And so I think that coming back to those priorities and at whatever point there are new priorities that are put together to honor those commitments and always bring things back to that is really important. And then I think also to look at where does something fit in the budget? And if it doesn't fit in the budget, then what has to come out to make it fit into the budget? So decision, things will change over the course of a couple of years. The biennium budget forecasts out for two years. Things will change and it's important to make sure that the total isn't going to change, right? Something has to come out for something new to be added.
Thank you. Mr. Kumar?
So again, great question. What factors will guide finance and budgeting decisions, okay? So look, let's first, there's the law of nature. We will always have less resources than we want. That's just the law of nature, okay? But good governance lies in building consensus in priorities. So the factors that will guide my budgeting decisions is first and foremost, it is community alignment. Specifically, does this budget line item reflect the city's needs and priorities? And what's the opportunity cost of this? What's the cost of deferring the project? So let's take all this into account. It's community alignment. Then long-term sustainability. Let's consider the full lifecycle cost of each of those line items. Can we do this without creating unfunded liabilities? What's the impact to the reserves? So those are the two big macro factors that I will look at. Community alignment and long-term sustainability to prioritize.
Thank you. Mr. Harder?
Thanks. When making finance and budgeting decisions, I think my guiding principle is based on responsible stewardship of taxpayer dollars while maintaining the high-quality services that Mill Creek residents expect. You know, the city invests in public safety, city maintenance, along with programs and services, but we also need to manage those costs carefully. The city's facing a structural deficit that requires immediate action planning and strategic decision-making, which will require some solid planning that includes not only city staff but also resident input so they can prioritize what is important to the city as costs continue to rise. And the biggest opportunity I've also seen is we haven't fully leveraged the grants and the city has had opportunities in the past. I really want to explore and research the possible grants to bring additional funding into Mill Creek without raising taxes. And finally, transparency and community input will guide every financial decision so the residents understand the trade-offs and have a voice.
Thank you. Ms. Allison?
Thank you. Yes, fiscal responsibility is my highest priority. Not raising property taxes to solve every problem. Sometimes you have to decide what you can't do. And services, there's a minimal amount of services, you know, that we can claw back to. I think the city is healthy now compared to what it was four years ago. We were really in a rebuilding phase four years ago. So getting the right priorities, making sure we understand what the community wants and what the infrastructure needs. We do have an aging infrastructure and we do have a Department of Ecology. You know, we've made agreements with them to get on the good side of our stormwater maintenance program and other things that have to be prioritized. Thank you.
Thank you. The next few questions will be posed by my colleague Sue Renhart.
This question is for candidate Harder. What will you do to support a vibrant economy in Mill Creek?
Well, Mill Creek's local economy has seen some significant changes recently with the business closures like Brooklyn Brothers Pizza, QFC Starbucks. And while most of these weren't caused by the city, factors like changing consumer habits, regional closures, and high leasing costs, I think definitely have played a role. This shows that we need to actively support and welcome new businesses. I want to listen more to business owners, leverage our Chamber of Commerce, and understand their needs to help make it easier for them to thrive in Mill Creek. And through a streamlined process, create better communication and promote local commerce. At the same time, I do think that, you know, thoughtful planning is key. Initiatives like the South Town Center SubArea Plan can attract new businesses while preserving the character of our city and trying to find reasonable places for them to have businesses. Town Center is just expensive to lease and they just, we need more spaces that are affordable.
Thank you. Ms. Allison?
Yes, so not to echo what everybody else has said, but we do have several businesses moving out. That plan for the South Town Center, there are businesses operating in that area now and depending on what those landowners decide to do, either sell for redevelopment or stay where they're at, they're all grandfathered in. But that redevelopment can bring new opportunities. We also need to find places for those existing businesses to hopefully stay within the city at reasonable rates. It is the low-rent district for many of those businesses, much of which contribute to our tax base today. And we need to make sure we're making the right decisions that the is involved and that they agree with what we are doing to keep this area vibrant and we need to be supportive of the businesses.
Thank you. Ms. Allison, we're having a little garbled sound to your voice.
How is it now?
Now it's okay. Oh, Mr. Kumar?
This is the most important question that the city is facing. How do we bring the vibrant economy back? Absolutely the most important question. And this is where my robust three-pillared economic revival plan, you can call it economic development plan, has a large role to play. Look, this is a moment in time where the governing body of the city has to have a very tangible, easy-to-explain plan. So here is mine. The plan will have three pillars. The first pillar is a dedicated business development team whose sole job would be to go out and let's go show the services and the benefits to the rest of the greater Seattle area and outside. The second pillar is an incentive and a retention program. Let's work with people to incentivize them and retain them. Third one is a research analysis wing which will analyze what businesses does the city need and suits. So three pillars, very robust, easy to understand, and they're all on my website. Happy to dive into more.
Thank you. Ms. Goldieski?
Thank you. I think echoing what a lot of other people have said, one of the biggest challenges right now is retail places that have been closing and that definitely is reflecting national and regional trends as opposed to being directly related to policies here in Mill Creek. So it's important as we look forward that we recognize what those national trends are. People are shopping more online. People are looking for services locally and not necessarily looking for retail. But some retail continues to be strong, so it's important for us to look for, small businesses I think are going to be the key. And I think that the South Town Center development provides a huge opportunity to not only create more space for retail but also to create competition for those leases. And then also we have open spaces for retail and for business in other parts of the city as well. In the farm, in the northern end of the town center where there's already retail space below multifamily housing. So we need to look for tenants for those as well.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Mr. Kumar. What measures, if any, would you propose to support or keep housing options in Mill Creek affordable?
So this is a contentious topic among the residents of Mill Creek and which means it needs a very spirited community discussion. And so my vision for Mill Creek is that the core of the city must remain the same. Single-family, low-density residential neighborhoods, that must absolutely remain the same. But we still have to respond to and manage the growth that is coming our way. And to that, my proposal is all growth must be focused on places which are closer to the transit centers and the major intersections. That said, the community must also understand why it needs to grow. They have to understand that the county wants us to grow by 18% and it's better to have a say in where we want to grow and how we want to grow rather than somebody else coming and telling us, oh, this is where you have to grow. So it's very important that the community has a spirited discussion about what my plans are and then let's agree on the go-forward plan.
Thank you. Ms. Goldieski?
Yes, so as the parent of three kids in their twenties, affordable housing is really an important topic that hits home, so to speak. The opportunities that are out there for our kids in their twenties are very different than what we experienced when we were in our twenties and we were able to buy a home. And so I think there's a couple of different things that are important to look at. I think that housing programs like the MFTE, income-based rentals, are important and they're a good way for young professionals who are just getting out on their, getting started on their own to be able to afford rent. And then I also think we need to look at paths towards homeownership. City council can't tell a developer to come in and build condos instead of apartments, but what can we do to incentivize that? What can we do to advocate to the state legislature to remove some barriers towards condos being built? Because I think that affordable path to homeownership will be a good way for the long-term affordability of housing for our young people.
Thank you. Mr. Harder?
So housing affordability, I think, is really important to ensure that everybody can live in this city and that ensures teachers, first responders, single parents, and local workers can all live in this city. And while we can't solve housing alone, I think the city can plan strategically and support responsive, responsible development that provides options for all residents. Like the SubArea Plan, it's a good tool. It'll help guide growth and balance new housing with the character of our community. Projects like the Arden Building, which is now under the Spokane Indian Housing Authority for Low Income, it shows how partnerships can help, I think, meet community needs. I believe in inclusive planning and community input. I think all residents should have a voice in how this growth happens and ensure the new housing fits the needs of our community while still maintaining, you know, the way that Mill Creek looks. I think our single-family neighborhoods need to remain the same with no threat of dense housing within these neighborhoods. So we just need to keep it accessible for all.
Thank you. Ms. Allison?
Thank you. Yes, our comprehensive plan that was submitted and accepted this year provisioned with policy be open to and that South County, or the South Town Center, excuse me, is where we chose to increase the density where preferably condos but apartments as well can be created by developers. We do have issues with the legislature. I'm on the legislative committee. The condominium laws right now put a big burden on the developers. The developers don't want to create condos. It puts, it locks them in for at least 10 years. It's overbearing and so we continue to put pressure on the legislature's community to fix that at the state level so that we can have what we want here. Thanks.
Thank you. Again, we'll begin with Ms. Allison. Again, we'll begin with Ms. Allison. What are your ideas for addressing infrastructure needs as Mill Creek works to comply with Growth Management Act requirements?
Yes, as I stated in my last response, we do have a new comprehensive plan that was submitted and approved. It accommodates the growth that we need to provision for. We provision for that growth by rezoning the South Town Center Subarea. And we have to worry about the infrastructure. There there could be a scenario where the city improves the infrastructure in that area to incentivize developers to come in and create that housing that we need. At the same time, we need to worry about where those businesses are going to relocate as well. So there's a balancing act there, and I'd be willing to pull out any any stop to try to meet that balance through policy.
Thank you. Mr. Harder.
Well, the Growth Management Act has certainly caused some issues for for all cities as we try and find, you know, places to give give other people to come to our city and and to reside here and to raise families. And with the the lack of plats and land to to do this, again, we've talked about the South Town Center Plan and Subarea. That's that's what's going to help us. But for the infrastructure needs, you know, the city's been ramping up since I had worked for the city. They've been putting a lot of effort into bringing a lot more public work staff on board. They're already addressing a lot to do with the streets. And as we continue to look at more of the engineering needs, whether it has to do with bridges, streets, widening, you know, mass transit, whatever that might be, I think we're going to be seeing a lot of a lot of work that needs to be done with City Council to help us achieve a lot of those goals.
Thank you. Mr. Kumar.
Thank you. So this question is sort of related to the last one as well. So then the the G M A, on one hand, G M A says we have to grow, we have to provide additional housing. I think, I mean, we are sort of on the on the lower end of of the percentage of growth needed. Some of the neighboring cities, City of Edmonds, City of Lake Forest Park, and Macaldeo and Linwood, they all have to grow sixty, eighty percent. We only have to grow eighteen percent. But that still is a lot for a small city like Mill Creek. I think the the exact number is two thousand four hundred homes have to be provided. But along with those homes also comes, there's a need for for additional public safety staff, public works, and all that needs to be funded. So I think first we have to figure out, we need to, we need to have a plan to so to do financial modeling to see all that growth, how much of sort of increased revenue is that contributing to the city? What sort of vibrancy will it bring so that we can then fund everything else? So it's a domino effect for it all. But the core, but the the core message has to be that let the growth be focused on close to the the big transit centers.
Thank you. Ms. Goldbieski.
Yes, I think that as the Growth Management Act comes into play and we start to look at infrastructure, when I talk to residents, that's one of their big questions is, you know, they recognize that we have to grow. They recognize that the city has done a good job choosing where to put that growth in terms of not being in single-family neighborhoods and putting it in South Town Center. But what will we do with the infrastructure? And, you know, I would think that that includes everything from the roads to the schools, to the transit, to the stormwater, all of those things that are are there underneath all the buildings and underneath sort of all of our lives here. And I think one of the biggest things I would say is that there clearly isn't an easy answer to these questions, or somebody would already be doing it. So this is something that's going to take all of our best effort and best creativity. And I think a lot of it needs to be done in conjunction with other cities and jurisdictions, because some of the roads that come through Mill Creek are state highways or county roads. We can't do all of it on our own. So it has to be collaborative with other jurisdictions, and we're going to have to get creative with a lot of these answers.
Thank you.
Okay, I will take over again. Thank you, Sue. We have two more questions for you. The next one, beginning with Ms. Goldbieski, is what additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of your district?
It's an interesting question. One of one of the things that I would say we haven't talked about tonight is a recent situation that happened with South County Fire. There was a redeployment that happened. The fire commissioners and the fire chiefs made a new plan. They changed the staffing levels at our local station. And I think this was a really interesting exercise in residents getting involved, residents finding out how to voice their opinions, and City Council coming together to make a united stand against something that wasn't working. And I think that on two different levels, this is a really important issue. One, it's an important issue to understand that, you know, residents going forward can continue to under to know how to have their voices heard. And then I think it's also an issue going forward that I'm not convinced we've reached the best solution with the fire district. So I think as residents of the fire district, we need to come together to learn more about what the deployment means, what a medic unit looks like, and whether we're happy with our current service.
Thank you. Mr. Kumar.
So this is, it's an open-ended question, but I think top of mind for for a vast majority of our of our residents, of our neighbors, is the the state of the the economy and the way town center is sort of becoming empty. That is top of mind, but we've talked about that, so I won't go into into that. And where I, the the other part is, we have a lot of green space in the city, a lot of trails, a lot of parks, a lot of deep sort of deep dense growth, dense areas, dense forested areas. And people who live around those communities are concerned about homeless homeless issues, like unwanted characters, just being unsafe there and sort of creeping into their backyards and and just coming up the roads. So there is an urgent need for the city to take care of that. And I I have proposed us using smart technology to to address those safety concerns as well.
Thank you. Mr. Harder.
Yeah, you know, one additional issue I'd like to highlight is the importance of strategic long-term planning for our growth and infrastructure. You know, projects like the D R C C site, that's been pending for, you know, a very long time. And and I'm glad it's moving forward, but I'd like to see other projects like that start moving forward more quickly and using community input, clear timelines and proper oversight. But I also want to emphasize resident engagement for after working for the city and understanding a lot of people in the city, they're they don't really care about much until they don't like something. I know the mayor said that about council, too. We don't, you know, if you'd only hear, you've got to hear more about what they're doing, what you're doing right, and and move forward with that. And residents in the city here are only, they only come to help out when there's something wrong. And I want to see that changed and bring more engagement and have have people's voices heard more often.
Ms. Allison.
Thank you. Yeah, there's several things that come to mind. Some have already been mentioned, but in the last four years, we implemented a no camping ban, so all of the city-owned properties, we could vacate people, help them find services. It's not about just pushing people from one place to another, but finding them a solution to their homeless problem. That extended to individual landowners who had no trespass orders on file with the city so that we can deal with camps, so that the police department can engage the camps. We did have a social services element for a period of time, too. Now we refer people. We also have a graffiti program, so if if you you've been a target of graffiti, we've partnered with Lowe's, and there's a way to get that in situation resolved. And we need to improve our communication with South County Fire.
Thank you. Well, we've come to our final question, and this is the question. Please tell us something about your life experience that might surprise or intrigue voters. We begin this time with Ms. Allison.
Let's see, I feel like I've I've lived a few lives so far. I have five children. Their age ranges are quite vast. I've been married twice. My husband has also been married twice. So we have children ranging from thirty-five to sixteen. And I've I've grown up with a couple of them, literally. With that, I I have experienced, you know, being a a single mom with a couple of kids for a period of time, had to pull out all the stops to, you know, earn my way into a home. I am a hard worker, and I always find a way to make whatever it is I'm going after work. I'm highly collaborative. I know how to get along with others and come to solutions that makes everybody feel heard and happy about the outcome, or at least accepting of the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harder.
Yeah, like Councilmember Allison said, yeah, raising a family, that's that that takes a whole lot of work, for sure. Something voters might not know about me is, yeah, I'm a competitive athlete. I've represented Team USA for two years in a row for the duathlon and competed at the world level in addition to participating in several local competitions, disciplines. I just got back from riding my bike across the state. But what this experience has taught me and what I want to bring to City Council is that success takes consistent, hard work, preparation, and attention to detail, just as training for world-class competitions requires planning, practice, perseverance. But providing those high-quality city services also requires that type of dedication, coordination, and follow-through. So being an athlete has also taught me discipline, focus, and resilience, which I think are critical for tackling a lot of these complex issues we we've been talking about tonight, just so we can have the best outcome for the city of Mill Creek.
Thank you. Mr. Kumar.
All right, I was speaking on you. So the question is, life experiences that might surprise or intrigue voters. So I have two two sort of fun facts about me. The first one is I have raced on a professional racetrack in Le Mans, France. That is the equivalent of the the NASCAR in U S, so I have raced on that track itself. It was a lot of fun and very exhausting, twenty-four hours, but a lot of fun. And the second one is, see, Mill Creek, we we have a golf course at the heart of the city, and 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 I'm a big golfer. Golf since two thousand one, and I've hit hole-in-one once. Yeah, I wish I did more of that, but only once. This was in the Linwood Golf Course in Hole Number, I think it was four, par three. Yeah, so, you know, professional racetrack and a hole-in-one once.
Thank you. Ms. Goldbieski, final word to you.
Gorav and I came at this question the same way. What are some fun facts? I feel like I'm an open book, so I was trying to think of something people wouldn't know about me. And one thing is that I am and or was a really big Star Trek fan, particularly in my teenage years when The Next Generation was on live. And I think it really inspired me to think about how we, as humanity, are part of like a larger, something larger than than what we know, larger than what we can see, and that we have to learn to work together with other people, even if they have a vastly different experience than we do. And space is just cool. And then the other thing, this will surprise people because it surprised me. I learned the last month or two that I actually really like to dance. I took my my high school Girl Scouts on a cruise to Alaska that they'd been planning and saving for for years. And one of the highlights was that we went dancing almost every night. And I spent the weekend at camp this weekend that they planned, and we line danced all day. It was super fun.
Thank you. So we have come to the end of our questions. The League thanks the candidates for their for running for office and for joining us with this forum. We encourage our audience to explore additional information about these and all candidates. Recordings of all League forums, those recorded for the primary and the general elections, are available on the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County website, on YouTube, and on podcast channels. Find links at L W V S N O H O dot org. If you prefer written responses, vote411.org, sponsored by the League, is another good source of information. Ballots and your Snohomish County voter pamphlet will be mailed starting October seventeenth. Election Day is Tuesday, November fourth. Please be a voter. Thank you to our League Candidate Forum team and the Candidate Forum Coalition. Special thanks to Dave Moon and the Sultan High School students at TurkPride.TV, who made this production possible. And of course, thank you all for joining us. This concludes our Candidate Forum.